I call this Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for November 2nd, 2015. We'll begin tonight by a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for giving us another day. We come to you this evening asking your guidance, wisdom, and direction as we begin our meeting. We are especially grateful for those who are gathered here this evening to participate in the meeting. Please be with the commissioners in their deliberations and in the decisions they make for the betterment of Onslow County. Almighty God, we ask that you bless all those employees whom we recognize tonight for their effective, safe, and dedicated service to the citizens of Onslow County. Our Heavenly Father, we pray for the men and women who are serving in our military. Please place your loving arms around them as they protect us at home and abroad. Lord, this Veterans Day, we honor those who have served in every branch of our military. We are reminded that because of their service and sacrifice, we can walk free in this great land. We ask that you will abundantly bless our veterans and the families of those veterans who paid the ultimate sacrifice by giving their life for our country. Now, dear Lord, with deep respect for the faith traditions and beliefs of all who are gathered here, hear us in a moment of silence. Please join Mr. David Cotton, Deputy County Manager, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. Special thanks to our Sheriff for being here. You're welcome. If you have not silenced your listening devices, please do so now. The Board affords the public two opportunities to speak during this meeting. There will be a three-minute segment at the beginning of the meeting, which is agenda-driven, so you can only speak on those topics that are on tonight's agenda. The second is for five minutes, and you can speak on any topic that the county commissioner has authority over. We ask that you sign up in the back of the room. You will be called forward in the order that you signed up. As you approach the podium, please give your name and address to our clerk. We ask that you make your comments to the Board in its entirety, without singling out any commissioners, and that all comments are respectful in nature. We ask that there not be any promotion of a business or a candidacy, and the Board reserves the opportunity to respond if they wish at Commissioner comments at the end of the At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. A motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Manager, this is our first public comment for three minutes. Do we have anyone signed up?
Madam Chair, we have no one signed up for the first public comment, period.
Okay. Well, would you proceed with the agenda items then?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item four, presentations. North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards Presentations. The North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards Program recognizes private and public employers throughout the state that achieve and maintain good safety records. The program is designed to stimulate interest in accident prevention and to promote safety in the workplace by providing an incentive to employers and employees to maintain a safe and helpful workplace. In operation since 1946, the program now extends to more than 3,300 employers, and about 2,000 awards are presented annually. To qualify for an annual safety award, an employer must have had no fatalities during the calendar year at the site or location for which the award was given, and have maintained an incidence rate of at least 50 percent below the average for its particular industry group. We're very pleased to have with us this evening in Onslow County Commissioner Barry of the North Carolina Department of Labor. Commissioner Barry will be presenting the safety awards to Onslow County departments that have achieved this rating and award. Madam Chair, with your permission, Commissioner?
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Boy, I tell you what, I am excited to be here in Onslow County. This is such a wonderful event and a wonderful evening, because we're here to celebrate achievements in safety and health, and what could be better than that? To be able to go home at the end of your work shift to your family, loved ones, and friends, safe and healthy. To spend more time with your families. To be able to get up the next morning and be productive at work, so that you can continue to support your families. What could be more important than that? And thank you, Commissioners, for your support of all the safety and health programs that your folks have put into place, because without your support, these programs really don't go anywhere. They need the support of everyone. Every single person involved in county government here has to be involved in every single safety and health program, and Frank, you know all about that. And that's what makes it work. That's what makes it work. When everyone buys into the program, believes in the program, and works on the program. The OSHA regulations that I enforce in the Department of Labor were written in blood and pain. Blood and pain wrote those OSHA standards. So they're very important when they're complied with, to try to prevent suffering going forward into the future by our workers. So when you comply with those, you have a good, safe, and healthy workplace. That's why it's so important. But we like to help you with that by providing consultative services, which means we will come in to your facility, your job site, or wherever you need us, and walk through that facility or job site with you, and point out all the places where you can make improvements, where you're not in compliance with OSHA regulations. We'll point those out to you. And guess what? When we do that, we leave those citation pads at home. We don't cite you for any violations. All we ask, when we do that, to help you, is that you abate those hazards, fix those things that we said needed fixing in a timely manner. That's all we ask. So everyone should embrace that. Everyone should embrace safety and health. And think about it. For you Commissioners, when you have a good safety and health program in place, and your injuries and illnesses stay really low, that saves you so much money on your workers' comp rates and your workers' comp cases, and that saves all of you money, because it's your money that pays those cases. So this is good not only for the individual, keeping them safe, but it's good for everybody, everybody in the county. So you all should be very proud of the records that have been achieved here tonight. Now, this is for the past. This is for the past. So what we need to look to is the future, and you need to look to that future knowing that the most important time for safety and health for everyone is the next minute of your life, the very next minute. Forget about yesterday. Yesterday's forgotten about you. I guarantee that it has. So forget about yesterday, and don't worry about tomorrow too much, because you haven't met tomorrow yet, and tomorrow's gonna surprise you, more than likely. Good or bad, it's gonna surprise you, so don't worry about that too much. But instead, I would simply ask that you open your hearts and your minds to the most important time, the most important time, and that's the next minute of your life. Make sure that that minute is as safe as it can possibly be for you and those around you, and you'll have a wonderful, productive life, and be able to spend that life with the people you love. Thank you so much for letting me be here tonight, because of what you've done every day in keeping each other safe and healthy. North Carolina has the lowest injury and illness rate for our workers in the history of the state, and it couldn't have been done without the efforts of each and every one of you and folks like you working all across the state. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do every day, and I'm proud to recognize those accomplishments tonight. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Commissioners, please forgive me for turning my back to my friends out in the audience. I'm not as eloquent as Commissioner Barry. I'd like to have something right before me, so I will turn around and say, "Good evening."
Good evening to everyone. When we do call your name for the safety award tonight, we would love for you to come enthusiastically and stand with Commissioner Barry, so that your photograph will be taken. So take that moment, because it's your time to shine tonight. So let's go ahead and get started with the safety awards. With the safety awards, we have the Silver Awards first, and we start, when we look at those, we look at just the rate of days away from work, and they have to be 50 percent below the industry average. For the first-year Silver, we have an award for animal services. Please come forward.
I'm glad she said it was pretty, and not me being pushy, so that was good. I think we'll have a nice drive back tonight. The next award is for emergency services. Parks and Recreation. Social Services. And for a second consecutive year Silver Award, Solid Waste. The next group of awards are the Gold Awards. With the Gold Awards, we look at the rate of days away from work, job transfer, and restriction, and they have to be 50 percent below the industry average. For the first-year Gold, Consolidated Human Services. The County Sheriff's Office. For the second consecutive year Gold Award, the Library. Planning and Development. Environmental Services, Vector Control. For the third consecutive year Gold, Office of the County Attorney. Information Technology Services. For the fifth consecutive year, we do have awards that are plaques, and for the first one, we have is for purchasing for a fifth consecutive year. Please come forward. The next fifth year award is for Tax Office. For the seventh consecutive year, Soil and Water. For the thirteenth consecutive year, County of Administration and Governing Body. Also for the thirteenth consecutive year, Finance.
Yay.
And Human Resources. For the fourteenth consecutive year, we have an award for the Airport. And also a fourteenth consecutive year for Vehicle Maintenance. The next group of awards are nineteenth consecutive year awards, and the first is for the Board of Elections. Cooperative Extension. The Museum. Register of Deeds. And the last award we have tonight is for Veteran Services. From the Department of Labor, we'd like to continue to thank you for your support of the program. It means the world to us that you participate with us and give us an opportunity to come and present the awards to the people who have earned them. We do look forward to seeing you next year, and I must say, for those that are nineteenth consecutive years, encourage them for no slips, trips, or falls, because something really good can come their way. We look forward to seeing you again next year.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes item four, Presentations. Moving to item five, Public Hearing. One public hearing is scheduled during this meeting. The Chairman has directed that I conduct the public hearing. This public hearing is for rezoning case LREZ 2015-50. Mr. Bobby S. Williams has submitted a petition to rezone tax parcel 324-199 from rural agriculture to community business. During this public hearing, we'll follow the typical process. First, we'll have a staff introduction by Planning and Development Director, Mr. Ben Warren. After Mr. Warren's staff introduction, I will open the public hearing. First, we'll have a statement by the applicant after the public hearing is opened, or the applicant's representative, followed by members of the public that wish to speak regarding this matter. Then we will close the public hearing, and after the public hearing is closed, it will be time for Commissioner Discussion. During that time, Commissioners may discuss this issue and ask any questions to the staff, the applicant, or the public prior to possibly rendering a decision in this matter. At this time, I'll ask our Planning Development Director, Mr. Ben Warren, to give a brief staff introduction. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners. The request we have this evening is to rezone property from RA, Rural Agricultural, to CB, Community Business. The property owner is Mr. Bobby Williams, and the parcel identification number is 324-199, and includes acreage of approximately .82 acres. In evaluating the property, there were no environmental hazards, either flood plain or wetlands identified on the site, and water is provided by Anwassa, which they have a 14-inch water line that runs in front of the property along Pony Farm Road, and sewer is currently unavailable to the site. Fire service is provided by Southwest Volunteer Fire Department with an ISO rating of six, and as we look at the streets, this property is directly served by Pony Farm Road, which averages 3,700 vehicle trips per day, but is within a close proximity to the intersection of Burgal Highway and Pony Farm Road, which in that intersection has an average annual daily traffic count of 12,000 vehicle trips per day. Let's take a quick zoomed-out look at the property itself. It's on the northwest corner of the intersection of Pony Farm Road and Burgal Highway, and it's about two miles outside of the corporate limits of the city of Jacksonville. Zooming in a little bit closer to look at the surrounding zoning, as you can see, the property directly to the south of this is already zoned, Community Business, and that parcel is also owned by Mr. Bobby Williams. The property on the northeast corner of the intersection of Pony Farm Road and Burgal Highway, as you recall, was just rezoned to Community Business last month from R-15, and on the southeast corner of the intersection, the highway business, where the Scotsman and BP gas station currently is located. And just looking at the aerial view, you can see just to the north of the property, we have a mobile home park, and then some surrounding residential and vacant properties in the vicinity of the rezoning site. And this is a view directly across Pony Farm Road from the rezoning site facing north. You can see the mobile home park there, just on the west side of Pony Farm Road, and then the view facing back south at the intersection of NC 53 and Pony Farm Road. As we take a broader look at the comprehensive plan and how it treats this property, as you can see, the bright red area with which this property is located is a community growth activity center, and the community, or excuse me, the comprehensive plan recommends within those areas to have low-density or low-scale commercial activity, office, and other more high-density residential activity, kind of branching out into more high-density, medium-density, and low-density residential. And as we look at the zoning districts, the existing RA has a maximum, or excuse me, a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, no maximum density, and 153 uses allowed, as compared to the Community Business District, which does not have a minimum lot size or maximum density, and has 132 uses allowed. And as we look at the two, as you saw, the RA has more uses allowed than the proposed Community Business. Really, the big difference there, both zoning districts allow a mixture of residential and commercial, but the Community Business District has fewer special requirements than the RA, which is more accommodating to a smaller parcel, such as the one that's being proposed for rezoning. The comprehensive plan, the proposed Community Business zoning district is consistent with the future land uses, land use map, and policies, whereas the existing RA zoning is not. The CB zoning would be, excuse me, would allow access to commercial goods and services to the surrounding residential area, and again, it is consistent with the goal and the vision of the comprehensive land use plan. And this was reviewed by the Planning Board at their September meeting, and it did receive a unanimous recommendation for approval. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Hudson for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on rezoning case LREZ 2015-50. At this time, I'll call on any applicant that's maybe present or representative of the applicant to come forward. State your name and your relationship to the applicant, please.
I'm John Pierce. Representative applicant is his agent for him, and I'd like to address a few comments. I think that Mr. Warren did a real good job. I'd like just to add that Highway 50 is a signal lights intersection, and Mr. Williams' property that's a button is currently zoned, it's currently zoned, but Community Business has re-requested, and I think this is a good opportunity to, as you know, Mr. Williams is a great guy, he's owner of Great Gas and Oil, and I would envision, in the future, we would see a nice convenience store there with increased tax base, and I know the county Commissioners always like more taxes. But anyhow, and we do agree with the Kamala Land Use Plan. It is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, and I would request that the Commissioners would look at the staff recommendations positively. would look at the staff recommendations positively and the Planning Board recommended it positively, and I'm here to answer any questions that any of the commissioners may have.
Mr. Pierce, we'll need to conclude the public hearing before the commissioners ask questions of you. Will you be available afterwards?
I certainly will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Having heard from the applicant, we will now move to the segment where we may hear from the public. There are no individuals that have signed up for this public hearing. At this time, I will make a call to the audience. If there's any member of the audience that wishes to speak regarding L R E Z 2015-50, now would be the time to come forward, please. With no individuals signed up and no one coming forward to the podium, the public hearing is hereby closed. Madam Chair, Commissioners, this item is now available for your consideration and deliberation.
What's the Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Would anyone like to ask Mr. Pierce, or anyone questions? Mr. Warren, question?
Just for the record, the Planning Board and the staff recommended the approval of the rezoning.
Yes, sir. The staff and the Planning Board both recognized that it was consistent with the land use plan and the existing zoning in the area, and both did recommend approval.
Mr. Warren, did we hear from any concerned citizens that were notified?
No, ma'am, we did not.
Very well. Any further? What's the, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Item 6, General Items. A surplus property, final offer. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Laura Jones, our purchasing director, to present this item to the Board. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, Commissioners. On October 5th, the Board approved an offer on a parcel of land that the county has listed as surplus property. The land is referred to as parcel number 012172. It's map number 333-2. The land is located on Picket Road, and the offer was in the amount of $100, which meets the current tax value. The Board authorized the purchasing director to proceed with a negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process, and this process allows us to advertise it in the newspaper and allow other interested parties to submit offers within a 10-day period. And once we go 10 full days without any upset offers, the final high offer is brought back to you before consideration. The advertisement was placed in the Daily News on October 9th with no upset bids. Therefore, the high final offer of $100 is being brought back for final consideration. If accepted, the property will be sold as-is and removed from the county assets, and the county attorney will prepare a de-transfering the property. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the final high offer in the amount of $100 for parcel 012172, map 333-2. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. What's the Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions for Ms. Jones? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item is B, Interlocal Agreement with the City of Jacksonville. Over the last several months, Richard Woodruff and I, Dr. Richard Woodruff, the city manager of Jacksonville, have discussed the upcoming courthouse building project with which the county will be constructing in downtown Jacksonville. Based on those discussions, it was determined there is a mutual benefit for allowing Onslow County Building Inspectors to provide the building inspection services for this county development. North Carolina Journal Statute 168-413 authorizes the city of Jacksonville to request that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners direct one or more Onslow County Building Inspectors to exercise their powers in whole or in part of the city's jurisdiction. This authorization is limited to this specific county project. Part 1 of Article 20 of Chapter 168 of North Carolina Journal Statutes authorizes Onslow County and the city of Jacksonville to enter into interlocal agreements in order to exercise any undertakings on behalf of one another. In order to ensure that the ordinances and regulations of the city are complied with, it's been determined that the city and the county should mutually agree to allow the county's building inspectors and county fire marshal to provide building inspection and fire inspection services for the courthouse project. In addition to myself, Mr. Ben Warren, our planning director, is available to answer any questions, as Mr. Warren's department will be conducting the inspections if the Board of Commissioners chooses to approve the interlocal agreement. The specific action requested is to request consideration of the interlocal agreement with the city of Jacksonville to allow the county's building inspectors and county fire marshal to provide building inspection and fire inspection services for the courthouse project and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item C, Memorandum of Understanding for Firehouse Number 4 and the Emergency Operations Center. The city and county entered into a joint MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding, dated February 1, 1999. It was entitled "The Joint Use of the Emergency Operations Center for the Construction and Operation of an EOC Fire Station on City Property Located at the Commons." The EOC and the fire station were constructed for the purpose of mutual benefit, and these facilities were designed to house the county EOC, a county EMS unit, the county 911 dispatch center, the city 911 dispatch center, and city fire station number 4. The city's recent completion of the Center for Public Safety has resulted in certain city functions that were originally housed in the EOC being removed from the EOC facility and being moved to the city's new public safety building. Therefore, the previous MOU needed to be revised. A new MOU is attached for the Board's consideration. It replaces a prior MOU if approved. The specific action requested is to consider a motion to approve the MOU between the city and the county for the EOC and firehouse number 4 and authorize the county manager to sign on behalf of the county.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item D, Approved Settlement Agreement with New Hanover Rental Car. New Hanover Rental Car Incorporated, Craven Rental Car Incorporated, otherwise known as New Hanover Rental Car, and the county are and have been in the past parties to leases, concessions, and other agreements relating to New Hanover Rental Car's rental car business and related activities, including a car wash, service, and quick turnaround facility at the Albert J. Ellis Airport. The county has asserted that New Hanover Rental Car and its use of an above-ground storage tank, fuel lines, dispenser, and related systems caused the county to incur damages, costs, losses, and expenses relating to a potential release of petroleum on the airport property. New Hanover denied responsibility, and as the landowner, the county was required by NC Deener to clean up the spill. The county notified New Hanover Rental Car of the spill and its claim for damages, and New Hanover and the county, after extensive settlement negotiations, have agreed to settle the matter without litigation. New Hanover Rental Car is in the process of selling its rental car business and assets to Avis Rental Car System LLC and Budget Rental Car System Incorporated, or ABG. The terms of the settlement agreement require New Hanover to reimburse the county for certain costs associated with the cleanup in the amount of $27,500. The party is to sign a release of claims and assignment of the leases and transfer of the rental concession to ABG. The county attorney and county manager have agreed to the settlement condition on the formal approval by the Board of Commissioners for ratification. Our county attorney, Ms. Leslie Moxley, and the airport director, Mr. Chris White, are available to answer questions of the Board.
Board's pleasure.
Move that we approve the settlement.
Second. Any discussion?
I would like for Ms. Moxley, if you would, to tell us why we settled for that.
The amount of the cleanup was $54,000. It was a dispute, a longstanding dispute of over a year as to who was responsible. When NC Deener looks at the responsibility for spills, they do require the landowner ultimately is responsible for cleaning up those kinds of spills. This was an above-ground tank with an underground transfer pipe going to a pump. There had been previous discharges at the airport, so this was done in an effort to cut our costs. We thought that litigation, this matter, would be much more expensive than settling our differences. It would come down to a question of expert testimony. Experts would have to be obtained, engineers from various sources, and that's why the county recommends that you settle the dispute by splitting the difference.
Any further? Mr. White, could you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. White, I know we have, we've built a whole new airport terminal. We've rectified this problem, have we not? We don't have to worry that there will be a similar circumstance again?
No, we don't currently have any above-ground fuel storage tanks operated by any rental car companies, and the area was cleaned up per Deener's recommendations and requests.
Okay. Is in-ground fuel tanks the industry standard?
There are no underground storage tanks on the airport, and we don't like to, we prefer not to have underground storage tanks. They're more apt to leak than above-ground tanks.
So, we're still with above-ground tanks?
Yes, and all our tanks have secondary containment and are double-walled tanks. They meet new standards.
Okay. So, the likelihood of this being ongoing has been eradicated?
I hate to say eradicated, but it's been significantly reduced, yes.
Okay. I guess that's good enough.
Madam Chair, I have one other question. Chris, how long ago did we get, I guess I would say, a clean Bill of Health from Deener that we were okay with the measures that had been taken to clear up the matter?
Well, Deener actually hasn't signed off on that yet. They're waiting for some legislative changes, but they have indicated to us verbally that they are satisfied with our cleanup efforts.
Okay.
Ms. Moxley, would we settle this before we get the approval from Deener?
The assurances from Deener are that we have done everything we can possibly do to clean up the site. I believe what they are suggesting is, there were some changes years ago with underground storage tanks, and they allowed them, sites that had been cleaned up as much as could possibly happen, to place a deed restriction on the property notifying the public by virtue of the Register of Deeds Office that there had been a spill and that everything had been done and that no, I may not get all the instances, but you would not operate, for instance, a nursing home or a school on the property. We had that situation many years back with the Consolidated Human Services site, which had some underground tanks. The new rules that we are waiting to go into effect, and Deener is very confident that they will go into effect, does the same thing for above-ground storage tanks. So, we would be able to place a deed restriction on that small piece of property that, like we did at Consolidated Human Services, says we will never locate, you know, health-related nursing facilities and schools, et cetera, on that property. And that enables us, when they realize that we have done everything we can possibly do to the site, lets us move forward. So, we feel fairly confident that that is going to happen based on these rule changes. They just have not gone into effect yet.
Okay. Any further questions for either the attorney or Ms. White? All in favor of the settlement, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. White.
Item 7 Appointments. Dangerous Dogs Appeals Board. The Dangerous Dog Appeal Board shall be composed of five members appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners who shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. The Dangerous Dog Board will review appeals of potentially dangerous dog or dangerous dog determinations by the Animal Services Director and develop and review policies and procedures related to dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs to the Onslow County Animal Services Department. Mr. Gary Evans, Mr. Russell Henderson Jr., and Ms. Toni O'Neal have expressed an interest in appointment and have provided citizen participation applications. The applications are on file with the clerk, and all the vacancies were advertised. The specific action requested is to consider appointment of Mr. Gary Evans, Mr. Russell Henderson Jr., and Ms. Toni O'Neal, citizen at large category, for a three-year term, all of which will expire on April 4, 2018.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
B, Community Child Protection Child Fatality Prevention Team. The Community Child Protection Child Fatality Prevention Team was established and designated by the Board of Commissioners pursuant to North Carolina Journal Statute Section 7B-1406. The Community Child Protection Child Fatality Review Team reviews records of all fatalities of Onslow County children, as well as any cases that may be receiving child protective services in which there may be gaps in the service delivery from any county agency. All of the cases are reviewed to determine what, if any, improvements can be made within the community as a whole to provide services for the child population. A report is submitted to Onslow County Board of Commissioners and to the state annually. The following have submitted citizen participation applications to fill categorical positions on the CCPT/CCFT. Catherine Tallman, parent, one-year term, term expiring June 30, 2016. Angie Robles, other, category, one term, June 30, 2016. Julia Parish, other, category, one year, June 30, 2016. Roy Carter, other, one year, June 30, 2016. Lisa F. Oldano, other, one year, June 30, 2016. Mr. Nathan Sweet, DA's designee, one year, June 30, 2016. The specific action requested is to respectfully request appointment of the listed individuals in their respective categories for one-year terms expiring on June 30, 2016, and to approve a waiver of residency for Ms. Lisa F. Oldano, Base Family Advocacy Program Manager, who resides in Jones County.
Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve all.
And the waiver?
And the waiver.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
C, Museum Advisory Board. The purpose and goal of the Museum Advisory Board is to promote the usage and awareness of the citizenry in the cultural activities sponsored by the museum, and the Board shall assist the Director in obtaining state and federal grants for sponsoring programs or exhibits or improving the museum. The membership of the Museum Advisory Board consists of 12 members, who shall serve staggered terms, and at least one representative from each township of the county. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. There is one application on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. The member is Barbara Justice Rooks in the at-large rather category with a term which would expire on April 30, 2017. The specific action requested is to consider Ms. Barbara Justice Rooks for that category until April 30, 2017.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We had nothing pulled from the consent agenda? Do we have anyone signed up for the second public comment, Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, there are no individuals signed up for the second public comment period.
Thank you. So, we will move right into manager comments. Would you have any comments tonight, Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, just one thought. As Commissioner Berry gave out the safety awards, I was reminded of the breadth of county government, and as we had department heads come forward, I started thinking about what each of the departments do, and, you know, we cover from parks to paramedics, from tax to trash, airport to animals, from a vehicle fleet of hundreds of vehicles to caring for our veterans. County government really spans a very wide, wide breadth of service to the population. Some jobs are more hazardous than others, and we can immediately think of the Onslow County Sheriff's Office, Detention Center, paramedics, or the tax office. So, those departments certainly all place their employees in harm's way intentionally for the benefit of others, but it's incumbent upon us, even in departments, that where many of our employees sit behind a desk or work at a computer, to maintain a safe workplace so that we keep our taxes down. And it all has an effect on the bottom line, and so I want to thank our department heads and elected officials who are present for all they have done to make sure that we have a safe workplace. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
You're welcome. So, does county administration fall into that hazardous duty pay?
Considering the traffic accident I was in earlier, Commissioner, yes, it does.
That'll teach you the speed. Commissioner comments. Mr. Bright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations to all the departments that received the safety award tonight. It's quite an honor for the... It's quite an honor for the folks assigned to those departments to not be involved in accidents or situations that would keep you from getting that award and the long-time service of some of them that repeatedly, after year after year after year, getting those awards, I think it's commendable to our departments to not only be safe, but also to reduce our insurance rates by being safe and not having to be involved in accident and payouts. I know that's a concern. I do have one thing I need to, Jeff, if you could, I know what it is, but we appointed the Dangerous Dog Appeals Board. Folks, can you tell us a little bit about, for the public, what that board does, the dangerous dog? I know that Camp Lejeune has a situation on base with certain dogs not allowed on base, but a lot of people got confused, I think, by what this particular board does.
Certainly, sir. As, as is published online in the agenda, the board reviews appeals of potentially dangerous dog or dangerous dog determinations by the animal services director and develops and reviews policies and procedures related to dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs to the Anslow County Animal Services Department. So basically, Commissioner and members of the public, this is a citizen board appointed by the commissioners to ensure that the property rights of individuals is, is not trampled upon. Animals are deemed property, you know, and, and so before an animal is unjustly or unduly removed or dealt with, if there needs to be a determination or an appeal from a decision made in the animal services department, then this board of independent citizens has been put in place to hear such appeal.
Thank you, Jeff. Other than that, have a safe trip home. Thanks, thank you all for coming tonight. We had a good attendance in the audience, and we appreciate your participation. Need to have a lot more of that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Jarman?
I'll just kind of echo what Mr. Bright said. I appreciate our county employees. I appreciate the ones that got the awards tonight, and also I appreciate the rest of it. And I do appreciate everybody coming tonight, and I really hope, as I'm a commissioner, I show to the employees that I do like our employees and that they are doing a good job. And I just say with that, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Jarman. Ms. Millionaire?
Yes, I would like to, I know she's not here, the Honorable Sherri Berry for making that drive from Raleigh to be here with us to give out the awards to the employees, to recognize them and understand that safety is a measure that is a preventive measure. And I would just acknowledge you all for the work that you do each and every day here to keep our county safe in the work environment. And I know, just as county managers stated, you know, the sheriff, EMS, and some of those others, they have a lot more hazardous issues that they're confronted with throughout the day. So we thank you for what you do for the county and for the citizens each and every day and acknowledge you. And also, I'd like to take a moment to thank the volunteers on the different boards that are served here throughout the county, because without our volunteers, again, those people that give of their time and sacrifice, we really appreciate what you provide for our community. And lastly, Madam Chair, if I will, I would just like to thank our daughter for being here this evening from Los Angeles visiting as well. So thank you.
Mr. Bev Ken.
There's not much more to say. I concur with the other board members, and I see her daughters out there cutting, saying, uh-oh, mom. Shaking her head. Right, Steve? But thank everybody for being here. It's all been said. Our employees work hard to be a safe and good environment, and that's what we proud of, and proud of all the employees. So thank you for being here.
Well, I would ask you to come forward and let's take a good look at you, but I won't embarrass you that bad. I really don't have any comments. I just would say that this past week, the board had a special meeting, and I hope that the citizens of Bear Creek realize that this board's sole desire was to protect them and make sure that they had fire service in their area. And our staff really needs to be commended. They went well above what was expected, many long, hard hours to come up with the option. That was the final option that resulted in the county helping the volunteers at Bear Creek get that fire service back up for our citizens. So thank you, staff. We appreciate the work you did on our behalf. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.